Yes, Chair Berman.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Vice Chair, but present.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
And Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Great, and a quorum has been confirmed.
Thank you. And now on to salute to the flag. Vice Chair Hauser, can you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. And administrative business, before we move on to administrative business, I'll ask if there's any public comment on the administrative business.
Chair, I'm seeing no hands.
All right, thank you. I will close that public comment opportunity. And on to approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
I'm sorry, Chair. A hand was raised right after I stated that. It was from Thomas Rodriguez. I will allow him to speak and maybe we can get some clarification that he is looking for input on the administrative business.
Sure, thank you. So, Thomas, I will reopen the public comment opportunity. And this is public comment for the administrative business, which is simply the order of agenda approval of minutes from June 20th, 2022, and designation of liaison. Do you have a comment on any of those items?
I don't. Please forgive my ignorance. I just wasn't sure exactly what that entailed, but I appreciate it.
No worries. Thank you. All right, then I will close that public comment period again. And order of agenda, does anyone have a motion to approve the order of agenda? Vice Chair Hauser.
I will make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Berman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having some trouble with my computer tonight, but yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Godwin?
Also, yes.
And that passes.
All right, thank you. Next item, approval of minutes from June 20th. So these are the June 20th, 2022 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Vice Chair Hauser.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Godwin?
I will second that.
All right, motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yep.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
And that passes.
All right. And designation of liaison, it looks like we have none. And now on to oral communications. So this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issues within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. So are there any oral communications on items that are not agendas tonight?
Chair, I'm seeing no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Hauser, I see your hand is raised. Is that just leftover? Okay, thank you. Then I'll close that oral communications portion. And it looks like there are no consent items tonight. And now on to new public hearings. So the first item on our agenda for new public hearings is file numbers 2018-029 and 2020-020. Consideration of revocation of cannabis activity permit, CAP 8-18, which authorizes the operation of a cannabis retail operation, Seaweed Holistics LLC, for the sale of medicinal and adult-use cannabis at 450 Dundee Way, Suite 2, Assessor Parcel Number 022021640. Recommended SEQA action is exempt pursuant to the common sense exemption, SEQA Guideline Section 15061B3. Recommended action is adopt the attached resolution. And before we hear from staff, I'd like to give the planning commission an opportunity to disclose any ex parte communications on this subject matter. All right, it looks like we have no ex parte communications to disclose. Then on to a staff report, please.
Sure, and let me just take a moment to share my screen. Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The item before you is the consideration of revocation of cannabis activity permit, CAP 8-18, which authorizes the sale of adult-use and medicinal cannabis at the cannabis retail operation at 450 Dundee Way, Suite 2, known as Seaweed Holistics. A brief background on this CAP. In September 2019, Planning Commission approved the CAP for Seaweed Holistics by adopting Resolution 2019-031. In September 2020, the city and Seaweed Holistics entered into a deferral agreement related to conditions of approval number nine and number 18 to defer the implementation of those conditions to after the commencement of operation. That same month, Seaweed Holistics commenced operation. In February 2021, the City Council amended the CAP to incorporate the conditions of the deferral agreement into the CAP by adopting Resolution 2021-001. In August 2022, as part of the annual report for the operation, Planning Commission found that the operation was not compliant with the conditions of the CAP by adopting Resolution 2022-016. That resolution noted that the operation was out of compliance with conditions of approval 1, 5, 6, 9, 18, and 20. I will be going over the compliance status of these conditions in the following slides. Starting with the last condition, condition of approval 20. This condition, among other things, required the submission of quarterly compliance reports to the chief police outlining how the operation is complying with all applicable laws and conditions of approval. At the annual report on August 15th, the applicant was found out of compliance due to unsubmitted reports. Since that time, the applicant has brought themselves into compliance by submitting the missing reports. At this time, the applicant is in compliance with the condition, and staff notes that the most recent quarter ended last Friday on September 30th. Condition of approval 18. This condition required all outstanding and applicable fees associated with the processing of this project to be paid within 30 days of the approval of the cannabis activity permit. And that cannabis retail operations shall not commence operation until such fees are paid. The deferral agreement and the cap amendment in 2021 established a schedule for payment of the outstanding fees associated with processing the CAP, preparing the deferral agreement, and amending the CAP. The payment was due March 2021. As of today, the $25,952 processing fee remains outstanding. Condition of approval nine. The findings for this permit was found, the findings for this permit found that the existing glazing along the storefront to be out of compliance with the security plan, window requirements detailed in Pacifica Municipal Code 4-16.03. Condition of approval nine required that the window required window modifications to be made to bring the glazing into compliance prior to operation. For the planning commission's reference, I have included the language of this provision on this slide. The deferral agreement and the CAP amendment in 2021 established a schedule for window modifications to be made after commencement of operation. A summary of the schedule is provided here. No progress has been made with the window modifications since submitting for the building permit in March 2021. Staff was unable to issue the permit because the applicant hasn't responded to the comments on the permit. Because the operation remains out of compliance with condition of approval nine and condition of approval 18, the operation is also not compliant with condition of approval one, which requires the development to be substantially in accordance with approved plans as modified by the conditions of approval; condition of approval five, which requires compliance with all conditions of approval and all standards and regulations in Article 48 and applicable state law; and condition of approval number six, which requires the operation to refrain from creating a public nuisance. In summary, staff finds that the operation is currently out of compliance with COAs 1, 5, 6, 9, and 18. Pursuant to the Pacifica Municipal Code, planning commission may suspend or revoke a cannabis activity permit if any of the following are found to apply. I have bolded the criteria that this operation currently meets that justifies the suspension or revocation of CAP-8-18. Compliance status meets four criteria that justify suspension or revocation. Therefore, supported by planning commission's finding in Resolution 2022-016 that the cannabis retail operation is being conducted in a manner that is not compliant with Article 48 of Title IX of Chapter 4 of the Pacifica Municipal Code; not compliant with planning commission resolutions 2019-31 and 2021-001, and constitutes a public nuisance; and based on staff's finding that the operation remains out of compliance with conditions of approval 1, 5, 6, 9, and 18; and given that the city has provided several accommodations to assist with achieving compliance related to conditions nine and 18, and the applicant remains noncompliant, staff is recommending revocation. That completes my presentation, and I am available for questions. Additionally, we do have interim police chief Stratton available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Ms. Bazano, I just realized, I believe I forgot to read the meeting or the notes at the beginning of the meeting for AB 361. Is now an okay time, or shall I wait until right before consideration items?
I would suggest that the planning commissioners ask questions of Ms. O'Connor, and then before we open the public hearing, you can read that summary before we open public comment.
Perfect, thank you. All right, then, anyone on the commission have questions for staff? Or is there a desire to hear from the applicant before then? Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I did have one question that I still need answered by staff before we get into the applicant. There was, I got confused for a second, and I found subnote three. I was hoping for a little bit of explanation as to the jump in the outstanding fees. Seems like originally the applicant owed $4,080.56 for, it says for the original processing of CAP 8-18, and then an outstanding $21,723.33 for the processing of the deferral agreement and amendment to CAP 8-18. Could you go into a little more detail of what the initial $4,000 was for versus the $21,800?
Yeah. So typical as of all of our development applications, we collect an initial deposit, and then we bill against that deposit at our staff billing rate as we spend time on a project. When we first process the CAP, the staff costs of processing that application exceeded the deposit amount provided by the approximately $4,000 value that's detailed in the staff report. Staff requested that amount from the applicant to be paid prior to the commencement of operation of the cannabis operation. However, the applicant expressed to us that their ability to pay that outstanding fee was not an option until they generated funds from operating the cannabis retail operation. And so that was the reason that that element was included into the deferral agreement. The applicant was made aware that by doing this, they'll be responsible for the costs of preparing a deferral agreement and the costs of amending the conditions of approvals for the CAP to incorporate this change of the condition of approval. And as a result, the amount that they owed increased, but they were going to be able to pay it after they were able to generate revenue from the operation of their cannabis retail operation.
I'm sorry, I passed a question. I don't, all the things you said, I think I already understood. Just in really simple terms, could you explain what exactly they're being charged $25,000 for?
Those costs are associated with staff time for processing the CAP. And then that's the $4,000 amount as processing the original CAP. And then the additional $21,000 amount is associated with processing a deferral agreement and amending the CAP. And so they're all staff time costs.
Is there any chance you were allowed to disclose what the hourly rate of staff time is that amounts to this number?
So it's a mixture of not only planning staff time, which I don't have the hourly rate in front of me for 2020 to 2021, but it's approximately $215 an hour in addition to legal staff time for their participation in these efforts, and most notably, the preparation and execution of the deferral agreement.
If it was charged at a cost to the city plus some kind of markup on it?
Yes, the legal staff time is an amount that is passed on to the applicant.
And I'd like to mention for the record that Commissioner Wright is present. Vice Chair Hauser?
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to clarify. So it's clear that there are $25,000 of fees, and the applicant has not paid them, or the business owner has not paid them. When was the last time? And I'm sorry, I probably should have asked this ahead of time so you could have researched. But if you know, when was the last time that we've received any sort of payment from the business owner?
Associated with the permit, the development permit, or the cannabis activity permit, I believe it to be the initial deposit.
Okay, so they have not paid anything since the initial deposit. And Ms. O'Connor, I want to clarify something that's kind of piggybacking on to Commissioner Ferguson's questions. So every year, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is that the city adopts a master fee schedule. I believe the planning staff's hourly fee is made available to the public in our master fee schedule. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so applicants and the public and the commission all have access to the data. All right, I think that answers my question. I have more questions for that in that realm for the applicant, or I guess for the business owner. I'm sorry, I usually get applicants. But I'll reserve those until after public comment.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the business owner? All right, then I will give the business owner an opportunity to speak. And Ms. Bazano, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they get 10 minutes. They can reserve three of those minutes for after public comment. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So you would open the public hearing, and then you would ask the permutee, the business owner, to speak, and they would have 10 minutes.
All right, they will have, they have 10 minutes now, but then they can reserve three minutes for after the public comment period?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hauser?
I'm sorry, Chair, was there a statement that you wanted to read?
I was going to read it before public comment.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Is a member of the business owner group available to speak?
I do see them raising their hand. Please allow me a minute to Anna, is there anybody else that you would like me to allow to talk during your presentation?
Ms. Williams, we can't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Can you see us?
Yes. All right, you have 10 minutes. You can reserve three of those minutes for after public comment?
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for giving us the time to speak on our behalf. Second of all, this is a huge misunderstanding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr., sorry, Chair Berman, go ahead and ask the question.
Yes, I thought I had 10 minutes.
So we need clarification on whether you want to reserve some time for rebuttal, or if you want your full 10 minutes now?
We can reserve two, three minutes for later.
We'll reserve three minutes for later. We don't have a whole lot of information.
All right, thank you.
But based on the information that the city already has from us, our diagram.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, please allow me to amend the timer, and then I will be able to show it. Thank you so much, I'm sorry about that. Please go ahead.
Based on the information that the city has, there's been a slight miscalculation in the information here. We noticed that our storefront has been miscalculated. And this entire time that we've been trying to deal with this, we've been actually looking at the window, and instead of addressing the issue of the ordinance, we were originally told that our front store window was too small, that the city ordinance required that the window be 45% glazed. And unfortunately, our building is 120, no, it's 24 feet wall to corner to corner. But that's not our storefront. That's what the measurement was used when measured our storefront. Our storefront is from one corner of our building to the outside of our front door downstairs. And that measurement is 20 feet. And with that measurement, we are compliant and always have been compliant. And the city made an error in reading the, in the measurement. Our landlord and developer who actually built the complex just recently discovered this when we took all of the information that we got from the city that we've been going over, and we've been trying to come up with ways to fix this, and there's nothing to be fixed, okay? The ordinance states that the storefront must be 45% glazed. The storefront of our store is that. We do meet the requirements. We have submitted the information showing that we meet the requirements. Our first four feet of, right outside of our door, is all steps. That area is not considered storefront area or retail area. That was included in the measurements. That's the reason why our current storefront is not compliant, because the measurements are off. Now, that's all, I'm just asking that the city, please, take time and have planning. Go back and look at this. Because the measurement should be measured from the side of the door, not from the very wall to wall. That's not our storefront, that's our building front. And that's not the correct measurement that should be used.
And just to clarify, when, there was a time also when we were considering this, I asked a question if the second floor windows were to be included in this measurement, basically, in the calculation of the blazing for the ordinance. And again, I'll just reiterate in a more concise way. The width of our storefront from wall to wall is exactly 24 feet. You have made accommodations to our location before in not including the second level, because no retail business happens there. So we would like you to consider that in the same respect, the area of the retail store that the staircase occupies should also not be included in the calculation of the window, because there's no business being conducted in the stairs, nor underneath the stairs. So if this were the case, again, we have measured from the opposite wall to the start of the staircase to be 20 feet. By this measurement, the current size of our window meets the requirement. And we just wanted you guys to consider that and look at that solution.
And our landlord just recently discovered this because we had been looking at the fact that we needed to make the window bigger, and not the fact that we had been looking at the problem. When he actually looked at the whole problem that the storefront needed to be 45% square foot, he saw that, and he saw Uh, square foot, he saw that, and he saw the measurements, and he knew the measurements from what he built. Cause he built, he built the complex. And when he looked at the measurements, and he wrote them down, and I submitted them to each one of you and sent copies of the measurements to you. And, and, and planning has these measurements, and have always had these measurements too. They're right there in front of them, but they just measured them incorrectly. They just used the building measurements instead of the storefront measurements. And that's all. And this is a retail storefront, not the building storefront. And we haven't made any payments towards anything concerning this. Because we've been trying to, again, get this taken care of, and there's nothing to take, to take, take care of. There's nothing, there's nothing to do. We are compliant.
Alright, thank you. And you still have three minutes for after public comment. Um, if the rest of the commission does not mind, I would like to read the meeting notes and then open it up to public comment. Is that acceptable for everyone on the commission? Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna read some notes on how we're conducting tonight's meeting. Uh, this meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section five four nine five three. As amended by A B three six one, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID nineteen on March fourth, twenty twenty. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business. And is permitted under Government Code Section five four nine five three, in order to protect, to protect public health. And safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section five four nine five three, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference only. And there will be no physical location open to the public. Planning commissioners and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio and or video. The public can observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation. Or via Cable Channel twenty-six, or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live, and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raised hand function in the Zoom application on the computer, smartphone, or tablet, or all centers star nine. To raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile, so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. With that said, then I'll open it up to public comment for this agenda item.
I see at least one hand raised, so let me get the timer set for three minutes. And I will first invite, um, Peter Loeb to talk. Um, Peter, uh, once you start talking, I will start the timer for you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, my name is Peter Loeb. Um, I want to s- speak in support of the, the business owners. One of the things I want to say is that all of the out-of-compliance issues that, that were summarized earlier. They all stem from not being able to, to resolve the window problem. Uh, up, up until recently, it looked like the only way to solve the window problem was to change the structure of the building. And so the, the, the business does, did not want to pay the fees until they could, they knew that they could solve this problem. Uh, in, in order to meet up the window requirement with a twenty-four foot wide storefront measurement. The building would have to be revealed, rebuilt. And the owner builder, Ron Grittenrod, who's a contractor and former bu- building inspector. He appeared with the permit holders in the previous planning commission hearing. And he said if the window has to be removed and that opening widened by a foot or two, it's going to trigger a total reengineering of the building. There would have to be another system which would require alterations to the foundation. That's what he said. Mr. Grittenrod does not want to do that, which is understandable. So, but now it turns out that if you measure the storefront from the south wall to the north edge of the door. The window coverage is compliant, because you're talking about twenty feet of width instead of twenty-four feet. The original measurement was from the south wall to the north wall. But that includes a staircase that's not part of the storefront. The owner and builder, Ron Grittenrod, says the storefront does not include the additional four feet of the staircase. I only have a minute left. Uh, I want to talk about, there's never been a credible explanation of the, for the reason of the window requirement. And, and there's another, uh, but I'm not even gonna go there. Please don't approve the proposed resolution that you have before you. Please postpone the decision and allow the question of the storefront measurement to be resolved. It may be that this whole problem can just go away. And I'm, I know that if that was the case, the building owners, I mean, the permit, the business owners would be happy to pay the fees. If they could continue to conduct their business. Please, please don't shut them down. Uh, let's, let's solve the, the, the measurement issue. And see if, if they can continue to, to be compliant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, are there any other public comments? Or c- public commenters?
Uh, yes, one other person, um, raised their hand. Um, I see a person with the, the handle J E. Um, I will move you to allow to talk. Please identify your name for the record.
Hi, my name is George.
Alright, George, um, when you start talking, I will start the timer.
Hi, my name is George, and I actually worked with one of the applicants to, uh, get his business open there in that, in the City of Pacifica. And, uh, I know that before the applicant, or before the business owner, because he's in business now, was able to open. He also went a huge undertaking of reengineering the whole front. Um, paying all his fees on time, making sure that he stayed up and communicated with the city. And communicated with the city throughout the whole process. Um, I know that he had to hire an expensive engineer to, when he was in the middle of plan check. And I think that, um, if I'm correct, the correct way to go about planning when you're disputing whether the size of the building or whatever is through plan check. You either get an engineer through plan check when they ask for a rebuttal. Um, the engineer or whoever submitting the plans, uh, submits the, the, whatever amendment or whatever. Maybe miscalculation was done. Um, if I am correct, the applicant was given plenty of time to submit his rebuttal to, through plan check. Um, so I think that revocation of a permit is maybe a little bit on the extreme side for anybody. But I think that suspension till all the fees are paid. Um, because this evens up the, the playing field for all the other dispensaries. I mean, my question would be how many other dispensary operators were given an opportunity to open and create revenue before they paid their fees? Or came into compliance, and how long did they take for them to do that? Um, so I think, uh, and then holding the fees hostage, in my opinion. Because they want to get a resolution to this is not really appropriate. I've worked with a bunch of different operators throughout the state, and, um, you pay your fees usually, you, you get up to date. And when you're trying to work with the city, you do everything in your power to make sure you're compliant in every other aspect. So that you can be given some leeway if you needed some leeway. Um, and I think that's, that. It affects the other applicants if they've all complied. Um, I think the majority of went through massive renovations on their buildings. Um, some of them had to take partners. So I would just ask that, you know, maybe you suspend the permit till at least all the fees are caught up into compliance. Um, and then you let the engineers figure out their, their, their storefront situation. Um, I don't think you should revoke anybody's permit. I think that's a little bit on the extreme. Um, and I just ask this for fairness of all the other applicants. I feel for, um, my client who spent like four hundred thousand dollars. And he's still paying for it to this day. So I just ask that you be fair with everybody. Thank you very much.
Um, and Chair Berman, I see one more hand, uh, Thomas Rodriguez. Um, I will bring him in in just a moment. Uh, Thomas, were you able to?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Thomas Rodriguez. I am, uh, CEO of Rockaway Enterprises. Um, that store that we operate is, uh, under the, under the, uh, DBA of, um. Coastside Cannabis. I'm sure you're familiar with the location. Uh, my consultant, uh, Mr., Mr. Estrada is correct. Um, I was under the impression that the conditions for even opening the first day of business. Would be that all matters regarding my, my store facade, um, and engineering issues. Had to be fully addressed before I could make my first dollar. Uh, that said, I did have to take on some investors in order to be able to, um, offset the cost. Which was nearly, um, four hundred thousand dollars at this point, in order to make sure that I was compliant with everything that the city required. Um, on a side note, I'm saddened to hear that Chief Stidle is leaving. I look forward to a healthy working relationship with the new chief of police, and I would like to definitely set up a meeting with him. Uh, but what, uh, Mr. Estrada alluded to, uh, and I also want to emphasize, is really in terms of fairness in business. Because I don't want, I don't want there to be an unfair, uh, playing field. I, I feel like we've made every effort to be as compliant as possible with everything that is asked of us. And, um, and, you know, had we had the opportunity to defer. Uh, the cost that, that, that we had incurred in order to, uh, be, and open doors to generate income. That would have, that would have completely changed the game for us. We lost a lot of revenue for the months that we had to hold up. Notwithstanding the fact that we were in the middle of a pandemic as well. So I, I am fully cognizant of that, and I am sensitive to the situation. Um, I also, um, I want to echo his, his sentiment about, um, not canceling anyone's, um. License per se, because I do want small businesses to thrive. I, I know the Williams, I've known the Williams for many years now, they're good people. Uh, but I just, this is, for me, it's, it's, uh, terms of, uh, business fairness. And moving forward with a process that is equitable for everyone. So that, uh, there don't appear to be anything, uh, bias related. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Senior Planner O'Connor, are there any other public comments?
I'm seeing no further hands being raised at this time.
Alright, I will close the public comment period, and bring it back to the applicant for their, I'm, I'm sorry, for the business owner. For their three minutes if they would like to speak. And then after that, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay, let me, um, just promote the applicant. Okay, the applicant should be back, uh, in the room and able to talk, and I will start the timer. At that point.
Hello?
You can hear me?
Harris?
Yep.
Okay, uh, this is just to follow up, uh, to what was just said. Uh, first of all, um. I, uh, agree with Thomas and, uh, definitely think the playing field should be fair for everyone. And with that said, our building then has been compliant since the beginning. Just the measurements were mistaken. We've had this building, we've been business owners in Pacifica now for almost ten years now. We've had this building before in our previous business. And this building has been operating for us for a while. And based on the information that we just got, okay? It's not our fault that, uh, the measurements were taken wrong, or the wrong measurements were taken. And there was no holding a fee hostage or anything like that. I'm sorry, we're small business owners, and we couldn't afford to pay twenty-five thousand dollars. On something that we weren't even sure that we owed yet, or we still owe, and we had questions about. And we, and we didn't know we were being charged in our way. We have no problems with paying what we owe. When we started this out, we owed the city quite a considerable amount of money. And all of that money that we owe them, we paid. We paid. And we don't have a problem in paying. We don't have a problem. But this issue right here is no issue. When the correct measurements are taken, and we just ask that, please come out and take the correct measurements. From where they're supposed to be taken, and allow us to continue to operate. We just celebrated two years of being open with no issues whatsoever. In two years, we've had two security inspections that we've passed with flying colors, with no problems whatsoever. We just want to keep our business open and keep our business going. We just ask that, again, please take time to take the correct measurements. We are compliant, as is, and have been since day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions for the, uh, business owner. Or more questions for staff and deliberation. Commissioner Ferguson?
Chair Berman?
Oh, yeah.
Clarify, you haven't closed the public hearing, you're still, uh, you're gonna have the planning commissioners ask questions of the permittee? Or the business owner?
Yes, and the, the public comment is closed.
Right. And, and once you finish questions, then you'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner? I'm sorry Chair Berman, if I don't, if you don't mind. So I will leave the applicant in, um, the panel's room. Until, um, I hear otherwise that it's, your questions are, been addressed?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Ferguson, do you have questions for the, um, permit holder?
Uh, I don't have a permit holder at this time. I have a procedural question I wanted to ask in regards to. We put it in the agenda packet, uh, a note that the existing permit expires in less than two weeks on the sixteenth anyways. Um, is, is the purpose of this meeting to renew the permit? Or, I'm, I'm trying to understand if these are two separate issues, right? If we, if we get past the window and all the resulting fees from, uh, appropriate inappropriate window sizes. Uh, is, is there then a separate issue of renewing the permit with an additional twenty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars? Uh, for the license renewal fee, or is this one of the same hearing?
So Commissioner Ferguson, I can, um, help answer that question. Um, for, uh, can, a retail cannabis operation, um, to operate. They need not only a cannabis activity, uh, permit, which is the topic of our conversation at this meeting. Uh, but they also need to obtain a cannabis public safety license from the police department. And that is issued. And that is issued in accordance with a different section of our municipal code and and managed by our police department. They are tied together in our conditions of approval for the CAP, but they are two separate permits. One, you know, one's a permit, one's a license. Their cannabis public safety license is set to be expired on, in October of this year.
Okay, understood. Just the language, I don't know our municipal codes inside and out. So the language confused me a bit. Thank you for the clarification.
May I just say something that the application for that or the for the renewal has been submitted? And I do have until the sixteenth to pay that twenty three thousand whatever amount to to finish that up.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I've got a question for Ms. O'Connor. It's my understanding for tax purposes, and I think this applies to storefront as well. The stores, the stairs are charged to the first floor of a building. Is that your belief also? Or do you believe that the applicant's current view tonight is correct? That there's some question about the validity of the stairs as part of the storefront?
I I definitely have a response for that. And if it's okay through the chair, I'm happy to get into staff's response to that those points. I do want to recognize that we do have the applicant available to answer questions, and if there's there's no questions for the applicant, then I can move them out of the panelist position.
Thanks, Ms. O'Connor. How about let's try to ask all of our questions of the applicant right now? And then we'll pass it off to Ms. O'Connor to answer Commissioner Godwin's question, and we could always invite the applicant, I'm sorry, the business owner back. If we appear to have more questions later on. Vice Chair Hauser.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it Ms. Williams? And and Ms., I just want to make sure I have your names correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Ms. Williams. Through this process, and I know it's been a multi-year process. Did you provide drawings to the city or some sort of design of the building? Were you, did you provide architectural drawings?
Absolutely. And it was not a design. It was an existing building. This building was built in nineteen eighty nine.
And so you provided the elevations at the time of submission for the permit?
Yes, we have to. And and those are the, those are the drawings that we are referring to that the city already has that information that we were looking at the numbers and
And those were drawn up by Mr. Greenrod?
And those were also drawn up by our landlord too, who also did build our complex.
And so I'm trying to decipher if my question is for you or if my question is for Ms. O'Connor. So when Mr. Greenrod provided the drawings of the existing building, did you at that time provide the calculation or who did the calculation?
The city did the calculations for that. The city did. Planning did the calculations for this instance that we're dealing with right now. We just recently went back over the paperwork that we got from them pertaining to this and looking at the this, the exact numbers and everything in in attempts to try to figure out an issue here. And Mr. Greenrod, unfortunately, was told that we've been looking at the window for so long because we were told the window needed to be bigger, it needed to be bigger, and that wasn't the problem. The problem was the storefront has to be a certain percentage glaze. And that was the issue. And once he had a chance to get all of the information together and sit down and look at it, he noticed that we already had the measurements that that they were asking for. They were already there. They just took the wrong measurements.
Okay, that's that's extended my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for the business owner? Commissioner Ferguson?
I'm here for several of our previous meetings discussing these windows. Outside of the windows, it seems like there was an existing original permit fee of around four thousand dollars, which was not a window issue. Can we speak to, I I know that the business was allowed to open, and I was very much in support of that, and I was in support of allowing you to remain open pursuant to tackling this window issue. And I understand the structural implications of what we're talking about. You have a pretty sizable front glazed window. I'm familiar with the building. But outside of these additional fees that were incurred because of the window issue, is can you explain perhaps why those fees haven't been paid? And it seems like there are a number of different fees for different things being applied to you, but is there a reason for which we haven't paid those? You guys haven't paid those to the city yet? It's been several years, and it sounds like the next round of fees is coming due now.
I I can't really say specifically why that particular amount we didn't pay. I I was presented with one bill basically that I didn't know I was getting charged by the hour for. And
Our bill from the beginning we're talking about?
Yeah. I I can't remember, Mr. Ferguson. I really don't know why that particular amount was overlooked. I don't know now. But it, but again, you know, we we're literally a mom and pop shop. We went through a lot of fees. I mean, we paid a lot of fees getting to the point to where we were at that time. You know, we had this building, it it seemingly was the 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 window was large enough. I don't know where that those measurements came from, and I don't know. To be honest, I don't know why our city decided to have a window measurement inserted in the ordinances where other other places don't. As a matter of fact, they want the windows smaller for safety reasons. But anyway, that's beside the point. This is where we are. We asked for a deferment. We haven't really gotten to to this place since, you know, since then. We had a lot of family deaths last year and I I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. I, we just don't have the money. When we first started this, we were hit with a forty five thousand dollar attorney's fees when we didn't even go to court. There's a lot of things that we we've been having to pay for all of all the while we're we're trying to 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 build business. We also opened during during COVID. It was not easy. And up to now, we're still not profitable. We're still not profitable up to now.
And what a lot of people fail to understand also too is we got a permit to operate in the middle of COVID. And what a lot of people fail to realize and and forget about cannabis is a sociable drug. And if you have a sociable drug in the middle of a pandemic, when people are telling people not to go out with not to socialize and everything, what do you think is gonna happen? I'm sorry, Commissioner Godwin, you made a comment at the last meeting about how well the cannabis industry is doing. I'm sorry, you've been misinformed. The cannabis industry is not doing well at all. That's why our, that's why our governor just gave us a hundred million dollars last year to this industry to help us out. And I hope that the city is reaching out and taking advantage of this and getting some of this money too. Because we're hurting. We're really, really hurting. The cannabis industry is not doing as well as people think it is. And unfortunately, we understand that there is a pandemic. There, people are starting to come back to life. But again, it's been really, really tough. And our first two years of operation, we owed the city a considerable amount of money, and we paid all of that off that we owed. This wasn't something that was owed. This was something we were dealing with. But what we did was we paid off what we owed the city, and we operated for two years with no problems whatsoever. And and went through two security inspections with no issues.
Are there any other questions for the business owner? All right, thank you. If additional questions arise, we may ask you back, Ms. Mrs. and Mr. Williams. But for now, I think you'll go back to the main room. Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, and we are also ready to hear your response to Commissioner Godwin's question.
Chair Berman, I I would ask that you close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes. We we received the proposal of the from the, from the proper, the operator of the alternative re-interpretation of the storefront. We believe, I believe that this this discussion of the potential reinterpretation of the storefront is outside of the relevance of this item tonight. Because because currently the storefront remains out of compliance as no modifications have been made to bring the glaze into compliance. I've prepared an exhibit using the proposal shown, provided by the property owner and some additional visuals that may help kind of detail where staff is. So let me. So the upper left visual is what was provided by the the business owner. My interpretation of their proposal is that they would like to reduce the storefront area by removing area that the perpendicular walls occupy against the storefrontage as well as a an approximate three foot width that is placed in front of where the the stairs come down on the interior, as well as another six inches on the other side. While we believe that this discussion is outside of the scope, I do want to provide some initial feedback. The interpretation of the storefront as being twenty four feet wide is captured in the resolution that approves the cannabis activity permit and is used as a point of fact in the findings in the recorded resolution. And the timing to appeal those findings has passed. Therefore, we, I believe that the consideration of this reinterpretation of the storefront would be appropriate during a hearing to amend the cannabis activity permit if the planning commission is interested in further exploring this reinterpretation of the storefront. However, staff has the following thoughts and and feedback with the consideration of the removal of the three foot portion in front of the stairways. Based on a recent site visit to the operation, it's staff's understanding that once you enter this door, right to the right of the door is not only a landing for in front of the stairway, which is accessible to the public, there is an ATM machine that is used by the public. And so there seems to be no reason why we would not identify this as a customer-used space. Additionally, the city has not reduced the storefront width for any cannabis activity permit applications due to wall wave, wall width. Additionally, based on the figures provided, the northern wall width is not actually counted as part of the current storefront as represented in the drawing that was provided by the applicant. This northern perpendicular wall, which extends out and and is part of the projection which is shown over here. This this port, this portion of the projected adjacent storefront is the six inches of wall width that would be accommodated by that wall. And then finally, the only other two-story cannabis retailer, which was approved by planning commission, which is four oh three Dondi, which has not been constructed or implemented. Errors or elevators occur within their storefront or occur along their front elevation as part of their storefront, even though their second story is a noncustomer area. So those are
Sorry, Ms. O'Connor, can you, we lost you for a minute. Can you go back to when you started to speak of the other two-story cannabis permit applicant or holder? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Thank you. The only other two-story cannabis retailer, which is four oh three Dondi, in their approval plans, they have included areas where the stairs and elevator occur along their front elevation as part of their storefront, even though their second story is also a noncustomer area. So those are just a few preliminary reasons why staff would not recommend the interpretation that is being proposed in terms of the storefront. In addition to the need for, if if there was desire to further consider this interpretation, we do believe that there would be need to amend the current cannabis activity permit to capture these findings to confirm compliance with all regulations, which is an essential component of the findings just for a cannabis activity permit.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Commissioner? Oh, I'm sorry.
Question.
Go ahead.
Is also from Ms. O'Connor. Glass House has just raised a hundred million dollars to buy and partner with cannabis retailers. Columbia Care has significant funds as well and is actively acquiring cannabis businesses and making partnerships with them. Fourtwentyproperty.com, among other people, specialize in handling partnership arrangements and the sale of cannabis businesses, including in the state of California. Is there any reason why the city would not be open to a partnership arrangement if it had been proposed by these business owners in order to help them raise the funds to do this type of long-term ongoing, not, or to resolve this long-term ongoing window compliance problem and other nonpayment issues that they have with the city?
Chair Berman, before that question is answered, I just want to focus the planning commission back to the task at hand. We're talking about whether or not the planning commission would, you know, choose to revoke or suspend the permit. And so the the issues that are before the commission are whether or not the noncompliance should result in suspension or revocation. So issues that are extraneous to that, such as funding sources or grant opportunities or anything of that is is beyond the scope of the agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Bazano. And I guess since she brought it up, do you or perhaps Ms. O'Connor mind walking through what the process might be after tonight's hearing? If we chose, if we decided that it was appropriate to suspend the business? we chose, if we decided that it was appropriate to suspend the business? And then also alternatively, if the business license was revoked?
If I can start with that response and maybe, um, Assistant City Attorney, but Bazano can maybe supplement anything that I, I left out. So should the planning commission choose to revoke the cannabis activity permit as recommended by staff? That would go into effect ten days after the action and assuming that a no, no appeal is filed. And, uh, at that point, the operation would have to cease with their sales and activities that are, um, allowed under their cannabis activity permit, which is the sale and distribution of, um, adult use and medicinal cannabis products. If it was appealed, uh, to the city council, then the permit would, um, stay valid until action by the city council was made and a final determination was placed. Should the planning commission choose to proceed with a sus- a sus- um, suspension? We would, uh, collect planning commission's, um, feedback and thoughts about the criteria of the suspension. Well, how long, um, you know, the details of what you would want that suspension to be and the reason, uh, the findings to support that suspension. And then I believe we would return at a later, uh, meeting to present that resolution to planning commission for consideration.
Okay, so our only two options are to revoke the permit or to suspend the permit. Those are our only two options we have tonight?
That's what's been agendized. Surely the planning commission, it is within their discretion to decide to continue the matter. If they need more information or want to, um, staff to, to do something different. But before the planning commission this evening is, are the two options to suspend or revoke based on the fact that the last planning commission, there was, or at the planning commission meeting on, uh, August, sorry, I don't know. Sixteenth, there was a fifteenth, there was a determination of non-compliance.
And if we were to continue the item to request more information, we would then in the future still be presented with the two options to revoke or suspend.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Hauser?
Um, well, this is not a question, um, but I wanted to kind of throw my opinion in. Look, this is, uh, this is really hard because we as a city want to support small businesses and we underscore it every year as a top council goal, like our council does that. Um, and we have a committee that's dedicated to working with them, but we're talking about whether or not a business is in compliance and I specifically am thinking about these fees. These are not impact fees being deferred, um, although even though, even if they were, the business is operating. This is a reimbursement of our staff's time for fees that are adopted and posted to the public and made available in various ways. And in this case, you know, one of the exhibits in this um, agenda packet is Exhibit C, which is an agreement for the benefit of the business owner, signed by the business owner and the city, in which the business owner specifically warrants that they would pay these fees. And I'm looking at sections, um, four B and six of Exhibit C, signed by the business owner. Um, at the last meeting, we discussed that not paying fees didn't show a good faith effort to rectify the problem. I'm not sure why there's this notion that city staff can work for free. This may be a small business, but we're in Pacifica and we're not flush with cash and we need cost recovery, just like every other city in California. The fee question came up two weeks ago. My read is that the business is operating and hasn't shown a good faith effort to fix the issues. So I said at the last meeting that I think that rules have reasons. Um, at the last meeting, we heard that every other cannabis dispensary is in compliance. We heard some compelling statements from members of the public tonight. And I have a hard time asking staff to do additional analysis on the window. On this, on the, on the, or on the business owner's window for the business owner's design. When staff hasn't been given cost recovery for the future work and staff hasn't been given cost recovery for the past work. You know, I think this is binary. I said this at the last meeting and I think paying the fee would have gone a long way, or at least part of the fee, but nothing has been done since the initial deposit. So at this time, I'm going to support staff's recommendation. I'm open to whatever everyone else has to say, but that's my, that's my sentiment here. I don't think that there's some, there's something outside of the, of the needle that really shows that the business owner is in compliance. I just don't see anything that's been done.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One question that I have for the applicant is with the prospect of having to pay another twenty-seven thousand in fees for, in two weeks for a renewed permit, plus owing the arrears. Are they prepared within two weeks' time to make those payments?
Commissioner Wright, you, you would like to ask that question of the applicant, of the, uh, permit holder?
Yes, please.
Okay, then Ms. Bazano, shall I reopen the hearing and invite the, uh, the business owner back to answer questions?
If, if, if it, it is within your discretion to reopen the public hearing to ask, uh, the applicant or the permitee that question. My concern is that that is be, again, beyond the scope of this agenda item. The, the, as Ms. O'Connor stated earlier, the public safety license is a different license, different requirement. Tonight, we're talking about the cannabis activity permit. And again, that non-compliance.
I'll draw the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Ferguson? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright, could you have more questions?
Bunch more questions.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Could staff, Bonnie, could you explain to me in plain language what it would be for you to see it to be in compliance? So the ratio for the windows, it seems to me, and the payment of fees are, are the two big issues. Are those the only issues?
Correct. So, uh, the payment of the outstanding, uh, processing fees and, uh, the modification of glazing for, uh, within the storefront, uh, to bring it into compliance um, with the municipal code, uh, would bring the other conditions of approval into compliance. Um, so those are the two, um, critical items.
So for example, had they made their glass door, their, their front door there all glass in the two years that they've had while we've been talking about this, plus the time that they were complying for it? That could have resolved the glass issue. And had they paid the fees, that would have resolved that issue. Is that correct?
That is not fully correct. The replacement of there's existing door with a full glass door, um, I don't believe would meet the glazing requirements still. There would need to be further window modifications made to make, to meet the, the window standards.
Okay, and if we were to agree with them that it should only be twenty-four feet instead of twenty feet, obviously the ATM machine is a problem with that. If the ATM machine was there, which you, would still be of the same opinion based on the paperwork that was submitted to you? That, that, uh, landing area, um, is still part of the store. Would that still be staff's opinion?
I don't know if I am prepared to put, put a, a definitive opinion in the record on that. What I presented earlier were definitely preliminary concerns with that interpretation of the storefront. However, as, as I also noted, the resolution for the approval of the cannabis activity permit records in those findings that the storefront is twenty-four feet wide and that modifications are necessary. Um, and so, um, if we are going to, uh, look and, and talk about, um, reevaluating how we're defining the, the storefront, those findings need to be appropriately recorded, um, in the, in a resolution, uh, associated with the cannabis activity permit.
Okay, and, and is it, is it fair to say that it's been almost two years that we've been talking about this? About getting them into compliance?
Uh, I can confirm that the operation has been open for approximately two years. Staff has identified the windows don't meet the, uh, Pacifica municipal code standards prior to that, as we are processing their permit, which is the reason why we included the condition of approv- approval to require the implementation of the window modifications prior to operation. So I don't have a an accurate timeline of how long we've been talking about this, but it's been prior to the approval.
So it's over two years, safe to say, roughly.
Correct.
Okay, cause I too feel torn. I too want to support business, but at the same time, I feel like I have a duty to fairness as some of the other city people have, or citizens have spoken to. I have a duty to the ci- city as well. I'm torn. I'm torn. I am heartened by the fact that there has been no issues that have involved police interactions, um, having to do this. I'm on the fence about this one. Just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I guess I'd just make a couple of comments for the public record before I state my position on this for, um, the rest of the commission so we can move forward. Uh, one, I think we've done a fabulous job of making a case study of why not to do business in the city of Pacifica. We're just, the barrier to entry that I think has been illustrated here is, is something that we should all be a bit, a bit embarrassed about. I know I am, uh, and furthermore, we've now had three public hearings and by what I calculated about a hundred hours of staff time talking about the size of a window. Uh, which I think is why a lot of people are leaving the state of California and conducting business in other places. That being said, uh, there was a clear agreement at the beginning of this process. As a fair and level playing field, the fees were laid out. The fees haven't been paid. We are a cash-strapped city. I remember discussing this a year ago. There's been payment plans that were put forth and it does not seem like there has been any effort to pay back the fees that were, um, owed at, at the beginning of the application, right? There was a good faith effort made by the city to allow business to start. So for that reason alone, uh, I am in support of revoking this, uh, permit, but it's, the whole process is, is a, is a little bit disheartening.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Wright, you still have your hand up? Is that leftover from your previous questions?
Sorry, it was not on purpose.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Godwin, did you have any final questions or, or any comments that you'd like to state?
Sure, I can make a comment. I think I've had my questions. I guess I went a little far afield. Yeah, I think you need to work with all your stakeholders in a business. As a former business owner of a couple of businesses, it's I think that's essential and yes, there are things we can discuss in the future. And sure, I agree with Commissioner Ferguson that the process has been somewhat cumbersome regarding this business and it would be nice if it was more streamlined and more business friendly. But on the other hand, you've got to honor your agreements and I don't see that's happened here and the city needs needs to make good faith agreements as do the people that make good faith agreements with them. So I'm in favor of revoking this permit at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Uh, before jumping back to Commissioner Ferguson, I will say kind of where I stand. Um, I agree with what many of the commissioners have mentioned. I, I am saddened to hear that no, uh, payment progress has been made. I think a lot of us were hoping since our August meeting that some progress would be made on payments that are outstanding. Um, however, I we've heard from Chief Stidle in the past that, that this business has been operating without complaints and issues and I think it's a fabulous business to have in Rockaway. I, I find it hard to swallow to send them back to start and totally revoke the permit. So I would be in favor of suspending, um, their permit. And I do understand that more staff time will be spent on this process. I, I have to believe that the business owner will pay or make progress to those fees if this permit were to be suspended and then we review it again at a future date. Commissioner Ferguson?
I'm just, I'm just prepared to make a motion just to not spend any more time on, on this and go back and forth, but, um, if, if it's agreeable to the rest of the commission. I don't know. I don't know. I might need some help from, uh, Ms. Bazano, but if there is a way we can lay out a, uh, continuance date, this is if, we just say we agree as a commission, if by this date, the X amount of outstanding fees aren't paid, then we, it's revoked automatically without more input by the commission or if it's just a cut and dry, it's either suspended or revoked tonight.
So, uh, thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for giving me the opportunity to, to respond to your question. As Ms. O'Connor stated earlier, if it, if it is the planning commission's desire to suspend the CAP permit, then we would get as much information from the planning commission tonight on the parameters of that suspension. You're going to have to decide things like what the timing would be, um, for complying with the conditions of approval because again, there's no way through this process that we have tonight. You know, in, in other words, all we're deciding tonight is suspension or revocation. There's no way tonight to fix the condition of approval relating to the window. But the planning commission could decide to suspend the CAP to give the applicant an opportunity to, uh, try to file an application to amend that condition of approval relating to the window. And the planning commission would have to provide the parameters on that suspension. And we would come back to the planning commission at a next meeting or a future meeting to, to submit the, um, the resolution for the planning commission's consideration. So it can't be done tonight. But we would do it at a future date. And we couldn't put in the resolution, I think you asked a question about whether you could put in the resolution for suspension, something about automatic revocation. I would not recommend doing that because revocation would be a different proceeding and we would want to give the, the permitee due process through the revocation. So it would, it couldn't be an automatic revocation. So more hearings.
Even on revocation tonight is what we're discussing.
So tonight, you could automate, you could, if the planning commission supports staff's recommendation and there's a majority of you that, uh, adopts the resolution that's been presented to you, then the revocation would go forward tonight. And so if you would like, I mean, if, if you are desired to make a motion, then you can ask the chair to make that motion now.
Yeah, I, I need a couple of minutes to wrap my head around what exactly I would be moving to do here.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Wright?
Yes, um, I, I do feel like I have a duty, like I said earlier, to the city, um, also to those other operators who are in compliance. But I also heard very clearly from them that they are not in favor of revocation and they and they strongly recommended that we suspend. Um, and they're the competition. So I'm a little bit hardened by that. And in thinking back on that, I could support your thought towards suspension as opposed to revocation. Um, I would want there to be some very clear conditions about um, about what we would expect for that versus doing a revocation. Um, but I would leave that to further deliberation amongst us. Thank you.
Thank you. And prior to passing it to Vice Chair Hauser, um, one quick question. So if we were to suspend or to um, decide that the permit should be suspended, it's just a suspension on the cannabis permit, correct? The CAP, so the business owner, I believe, prior to having their CAP permit, they were able to sell, I guess cannabinoids classified as as different subset, sorry. Probably not the correct technical way to describe that. Is that the case? So if the permit was suspended, they could still operate at their location. They just can't sell cannabis, correct?
I'm gonna defer to Assistant City Attorney.
So I would say you're correct. I just don't know the parameters of their, I mean, there may be other restrictions on what they can or cannot do at that location. Like, I don't know what their business license is for. Um, so if they have a business license to sell other products, then possibly they could continue to to do business um, selling non-cannabis-related products. But the cannabis activity permit applies to um, you know, cannabis business activities.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bazano. So then hypothetically, if the CAP permit were suspended or if we decide to make a motion and approve a motion to suspend the CAP permit, do we at this meeting need to understand what this business owner is allowed to sell? In which case, do we need to receive more information in order to proceed with suspension?
Is that a question for me?
It's a it's a question. And and I don't know if it's for um, you, Ms. Bazano, or Ms. O'Connor. But I'm wondering if, just going through the process this evening, if we were to proceed with suspending the permit, do we need more information tonight to understand what this business owner is allowed to sell at their store?
So the the municipal code um, details that the cannabis activity permit um, uh, authorizes the sale of cannabis products. And cannabis products is a defined term in the Health and Safety Code. Um, and so I think it's it's, I think there is definitions uh, in our municipal code as well as state regulations that will define what they can and cannot sell with without an active um, cannabis activity permit. But are you also interested in knowing of what they sell now? Like, what percentage of their stock they're not going to be able to continue moving forward with? Is that the detail that you're looking for?
Uh, thank you for asking for clarification. Uh, no, not necessarily. I I mainly just want to be forward-thinking and want to understand if this permit were suspended, it's not like this shop needs to entirely close necessarily.
It so is if they wish to continue to sell items that don't require a cannabis activity permit, um, which is products that are, you know, controlled under that permit. Um, as as Ms. Bazano detailed, they would be able to continue that. Uh, I think the caveat that she identified was with the assumption that their business license and other kind of uh, accessory type approvals would be in support of that.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question. Commissioner, well, Commissioner Hauser, you did have your hand up. Do you have questions or?
Uh, I have comments.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so I think, you know, what I'm hearing very clearly is that we're considering suspension or revocation. And what I'm going back to is in the staff analysis, there's the sentence that says, although there is no specific requirement regarding when a suspension should be utilized rather than revocation, generally suspensions are used when a suspension is likely to allow the applicant time to achieve compliance in a particular case. So I'm thinking about, first of all, what we asked for at the last meeting. And we asked for payment of fees and there has been no good faith effort that's been made in that regard. I'm thinking about what the business owner said tonight at the meeting, um, which is that they don't think they're going to pay the fees until they resolve the window. And there's this disconnect between what they think is fair and what they agreed to. They agreed to conditions of approval, okay? Every applicant, every business owner has conditions of approval and every business owner gets to see them before the hearing that happens. And every applicant has the right to appeal the conditions, their own conditions. None of that took place. This was like, I think back in what, twenty nineteen when this happened? Then it came back to us for us to make these accommodations and we made them. And then years have passed and nothing has happened. There have been no payments of the fees. All this analysis of the window is happening in the final hour. I just don't, I I just agree with staff's analysis here. And so I hate to be harsh and while I agree with Commissioner Ferguson that there are things that maybe are hard barriers to be a business owner in certain places. I also, to some extent, disagree because I think Pacifica does a fabulous job engaging with our business owners and putting together documents and reaching out to them. And they put money towards economic development here the way other cities have not. So I don't think that this is an issue with Pacifica. I think this is an issue with this permit and I don't see it going any further. So I would not support a suspension. I will be supporting um, staff's recommendation in section D of the staff report.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, just a quick question for the city attorney. Are both um, suspensions and revocations appealable? And if so, like, if we vote for a suspension, does the suspension take effect immediately? If we vote for revocation, does the revocation take place immediately? Or does the ten-day clock start and then at the end of the ten-day clock, if it hasn't been appealed, is that when the that that takes force?
Well, as indicated earlier, the the if if the planning commission adopts the resolution that's in the package uh, that supports staff's recommendation for revocation, then it would take effect after the appeal period be is has terminated. Either a suspension or revoca- revocation, any determination of the planning commission is appealable to the council. Um, the suspension is a bit trickier because you can make that determination tonight, but it wouldn't go into effect until we bring back the resolution for adoption um, at a later date.
Okay, thank you. So in in some regards, I I do agree that, you know, we've tried carrots. Um, at the last meeting, it seemed like we were trying a stick. And so the question to me is is, are we talking about using a bigger stick or are we talking about a death blow? And I I have a hard time putting a small business out of business. Um, I still support uh, suspension as opposed to revocation.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a really hard time with this, so I think I'd like to make a motion because I wouldn't ask somebody else to do it for me. If the commissioners, uh, if the sheriff's chair is ready to hear it.
Uh, I'd be interested to see if Commissioner Godwin has any final comments. Um, I know you could make the motion and it could remain on the table, but do you mind just holding off for a few minutes?
At your pleasure.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I had a que- I had a question for Ms. Bazano. Um, do you have any idea about the history of these suspensions? What percentage of the time that results in the business successfully coming out of them and succeeding after this occurs? Or is it likely just delaying the inevitable? I I know that's a statistical question, but if you if you had that information, that would be helpful to me.
So I I don't believe that, and Ms. O'Connor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that any cannabis uh, business has either had its license or its cannabis activity permit suspended or revoked. So this is something that Pacifica is experiencing in the first instance. But what I will say in other jurisdictions, as indicated in the staff report, suspension works if there's if there's a chance of compliance. If it's, you know, they just need another month and then they're gonna come into compliance. Um, in this case, the permittee would have a a lot to do, a lot to undertake in order to come into compliance. They're gonna have to file an application. They're gonna have to get the condition of approval amended. That's gonna have to be approved by the planning commission. I mean, it's it's a whole nother process that will the app, the permittee would have to overcome in order to come into compliance with that condition of approval. In addition to paying the outstanding fees, which which they haven't done since two thousand twenty-one, uh, when they signed the agreement and the planning commission amended the conditions of approval consistent with the the agreement.
That sounds reasonable to me. Um, yeah, I'd be hopeful for a suspension myself if um, they had a deep pockets, deep pockets partner and I felt like there was some short-term activity that they could get the funds from somebody and they were in late-stage negotiations. But otherwise, I'm pretty much aligned with Commissioner Hauser that they've had opportunities and it seems like revocation's the best way to go.
Commissioner Godwin, just to, so I could more clearly understand your stance. Um, so it sounds like you agree with Commissioner Hauser and and you would like to pursue the revoca- revocation. But there was, I think you had a statement that you'd be interested in talking about suspension, or is that not the case?
Well, if there was some clear evidence to me, like they headed, they had a business broker, they had certified financial statements, they had talked to one of the big people who have piles of money to do this kind of stuff and they were in some level of negotiations, I could say, yeah. I could be open to suspension for a short period of time while they completed this discussion or the discussion fell apart and then they couldn't go forward. But um, given they aren't, don't seem to be moving on on anything that I see as a feasible outcome of this, I I'm more inclined to go for revocation. Um, one of the best things I learned, at least in software, is if you wanna fail, fail fast. You don't wanna keep dragging out a business that al- is almost gonna be successful until it's a slow death. Uh, so, you know, I do, this just seems to me like a situation where it's gonna ultimately end up in revocation. And the more we drag it out, the more painful it's gonna be for the city and and the business owner. And it's, nothing's gonna get better, just gonna get worse.
Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Godwin.
Sure.
Commissioner Ferguson, um, would you like the floor again?
Sure, ready your motion now? Okay, uh, I move that we adopt the attached resolution and find the action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and revoke cannabis activity permit CAP dash eight dash eighteen, files number twenty eighteen dash zero two nine and twenty twenty dash zero two zero, associates with the cannabis retail operation in four five zero Don D Way, suite number two, uh, assessors parcel number zero two two dash zero two one dash six four zero, incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by record.
Vice Chair Hauser?
I will second the motion and also ask if um, city staff can clarify with um, the amount of folks that are here tonight on the commission, how many people do we need to pass a motion?
We need three.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman?
No.
Uh, Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
No.
Then that passes three to two.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. All right, moving on to consideration items. File number two thousand twenty-two dash zero one seven, text amendment TA dash one two two dash two two, reported planning commission on city council modification of the planning commission recommended outdoor commercial permit ordinance, which would amend various municipal code, Pacifica municipal code provisions to create zoning provisions applicable to processing and issuance of outdoor commercial permits for existing commercial, commercial businesses. Recommended SEQA, SEQA action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to class one, class three, class four exemptions under SEQA guideline section one five three zero one, one five three zero three and one five three zero four and under the general rule exemption in SEQA guideline section one five zero six one B three. Recommended action is adopt the attached resolution recommending approval of the outdoor commercial permit ordinance as modified by city council. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Berman, and hello again, planning commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The text amendment for the outdoor commercial permit is being presented to you again tonight. Um, to remind you of the background, on September sixth uh, of this year, planning commission adopted resolution two zero two two dash nineteen recommending that the city council approve the outdoor commercial per- permit ordinance, which is a permanent ordinance to streamline outdoor commercial permits to replace the temporary COVID outdoor activity permit program that was established in response to the local emergency due to COVID nineteen. In September twenty, in September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, city council introduced the planning commission recommended ordinance with the modification of adding bars in the listed, the list of eligible commercial uses provided in section nine dash four point five two zero four subsection B. This modification was recommended by staff because it was identified that this use was not clearly included in the planning commission's recommended ordinance. Since the addition of bars to the list of eligible commercial uses is a modification of the ordi- ordinance not previously considered by the planning commission during its hearing, staff recommended that the council refer the modified ordinance to the planning commission for a report and recommendation in accordance with the Pacifica municipal code prior to city council adoption of the ordinance. Uh, the addition of bars would add a new eligible uh, use category. However, the operation of the outdoor commercial space of a bar is substantially similar to the operation of the outdoor commercial space of a restaurant, which can include alcohol service. And therefore, staff does not believe that further modification to address the bar use category is necessary. Potential concerns typically associated with restaurants or bar use such as noise from patrons, live entertainment and excessive late-night use would already be managed under the provisions. live entertainment and excessive late-night use would already be managed under the provisions recommended by planning commission in the ordinance, including those provisions highlighted on this slide. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution recommending approval of the outdoor commercial uh, permit ordinance as modified by cit- city council. If planning commission recommends approval of the outdoor commercial permit ordinance as modified by the city council during the introduction of the ordinance tonight, uh, the city council will consider adoption of this ordinance um, uh, at the October tenth city council meeting. And that concludes my presentation and, um, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Commissioner Wright?
I'm in favor of the resolution. Um, I think it was an oversight not to include it the first time. And I think adding this in is a good use and a good opportunity for the city to maximize our support for other businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I like that, Commissioner Wright. It's been, I appreciate his candor. And I actually remember thinking that it might have been something that shouldn't have been spelled out more clearly the first time. But I'm glad we're addressing it now.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I thought restaurants kind of included bars, but that was probably an oversight on my part. I'm glad to see it be clarified and I support.
Thank you. I'm supportive as well. Uh, seeing that we don't have any questions, are, is someone willing to make a motion?
Uh, Chair Berman?
Yep. Yes, sorry, thank you. Um, it felt like we were in deliberation already.
I know, so close.
Uh, so no questions. First up, I will open it up to public comment. If anyone has any comments that they'd like to speak on for the sign-up.
I'm seeing no hands raised.
Thank you. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for deliberation or a motion. Vice Chair Hauser? Oh, I saw that you went off of mute.
Sorry, I was gonna make the motion and then realized I didn't have it in front of me, so I was gonna let someone else do the work of pulling it up.
Could do.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Uh, unless Commissioner Hauser feels strongly about being the one making the motion, uh, I found it, you read it.
Please.
The movement of the planning commission finds the proposed ordinance as amended is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopts the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report to recommend city council approval of the modified ordinance and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Hauser?
I will second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. And before we move on to communications, uh, anyone agreed, anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has ten calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court no later than the ninetieth day following the date upon which the deci- decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, thirty days following the date of final decision. And now we'll go on to communications, um, commission communications. Commissioner Godwin?
I just wanted to commend the Bogfest team, cuz I felt like they did a, put on a great event last weekend and had a huge attendance. And I think that's a wonderful addition to the city. Glad to see them back.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. I agree. Vice Chair Hauser?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, state that Commissioner Domra last meeting had asked for, um, asked to agendize kind of a review of the planning commission's work, um, making kind of an opportunity for the community. And I know that, uh, staff had mentioned that that was to, uh, potentially gonna be agendized for November. So for anyone tracking that, I just wanted to let them know to be on the lookout in November and maybe we can give a, a staff update as we get close, Ms. O'Connor.
All right, uh, staff communications? Oh, I'm sorry, jumping back, uh, to council communic- or sorry, um, commission communications. Commissioner Wright?
I had one quick question regarding, are we going back to in-person with our next meeting? Um, didn't council approve going back to in-person for themselves? But I didn't hear in their resolution when they did that, if that included us as well.
Uh, Commissioner Wright is stepping on my toes with my staff communications, so, um,
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was waiting for my moment. Um, so if there's no other, I, I'm happy to go into, to that. Um, if that's okay with you, Chair?
Yeah, let's transition to staff communications. Bonnie?
Um, so on September twenty-sixth, uh, council confirmed the return to in-person city council commission and committee meetings beginning on October tenth. Um, therefore, starting with the next, uh, planning commission meeting, it, uh, the meeting will be held in person at the city council chambers with a live broadcast by Pacific Coast Television on Comcast Channel twenty-six and online live stream with a phone-in line to allow for participation by members of the body as necessary and members of the public to provide verbal input uh, to the meeting, including public comments.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any questions on that? All right, seeing no hands, uh, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn. Vice Chair Hauser?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Comis- uh, Commissioner Ferguson? Motion in a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Uh, Chair Berman?
Yes.
Chair, uh, Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson? Yes. Okay, yes. Um, Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And that passes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Y'all in person.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.